Let me just take the time real quick on behalf of the board to welcome everybody back from the summer break. I know it feels, you know, it's, or actually, I'm still in my summer break.
(laughing).
But it's, it's good to see this many people at a, at a July meeting and, you know, it shows a lot of, you know, a lot about your commitment to our district and to our students and hopefully, you know, it'll lead to a successful school year. Now, it seems there's a lot of excitement about the upcoming school year. Hopefully, it'll produce, you know, better results from last year. And, uh, I guess, let me continue to, the approval of the minutes. Do we have a regular, for the regular board meeting for June 13th, 2017? Do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
I so moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public forum? I'm gonna try to speed it up. I know we all wanna head home today. Item one, consider and take possible action on trial request from Gruia High School. I think it's self-explanatory. If there's any questions, do we have a motion for item one?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, consider and take possible action on donations to RGC CISD. And we do have a list of the donations and again, Mr. Garcia, we can send them a thank you later. If there's any questions on item two, do we have a motion, item two?
I would move to approve item two as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action on 2017 property value study appeals service contract with Linebarger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP.
The school district has engaged with Linebarger, Blair, and Sampson for many years, sir, with a controller's property value study. This is their request to renew and do the study again so that this will lower our property values on the taxes. We're asking, recommending that you approve the request for the, for the study.
Do we have a new discussion, item three? Do we have a motion, item three?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on the following childcare service vendor agreements for licensed facilities for the 2017-2018 school year. A, Building Blocks Learning Center. B, Butterfly Kisses, Learning Center. Cutie Pie's Children Development Center LLC. Gracie's Child Development Center. Kami's Culling Center. F, Learning Zone Two. And G, Nima Lopez DBA Happy Faces.
As part of the Life Skills Grant Program, the district contracted with all these daycares to care for the children of students so they can attend school on a regular basis with the help of, to help out with the dropout prevention. The district would like to contract the following, which you've mentioned here, and we recommend that we approve the request. They're all licensed and up to date on insurance and so forth.
Do we have a motion, item four?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion, item four. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on adult meal pricing for the 2017-2018 school year.
The request approval to increase the price of the adult meals to $4 for the 17-18 school year. The current adult price is at $350, and this was established back in 2013. This is something that, it's an annual request and a recommendation from the USDA. We have the food service director for any particular details or questions on it. We just want to be compliant and we're requesting that you approve the request.
Any, do we have a motion, item five?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion, item five. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on interlocal agreement between Stark County Juvenile Justice Center and Rio Grande City CISD for meal services for the 2017-2018 school year.
Again, this is a request for approval to provide Stark County Juvenile the justice program with breakfast and lunch for the 17-18 school year as outlined in the agreement. The child nutrition program will be able to claim the meals for reimbursement. Last year, as you can see, we had eighty, 177 lunches, which equal to $4,742.72. It works well and the kids get good nutrition there. We request approval.
Do we have a motion, item six?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on contract agreement between Pinnacle Medical Management Corporation and Rio Grande City CISD for alcohol and drug testing services for the 2017-2018 school year.
Currently, the district is using the drug testing services for employees in the transportation department and security and any other situation that requires services. Pinnacle Medical Management Corporation is able to provide these services as per the contract agreement. This agreement will automatically renew for an additional one year and can be canceled at any sixty days prior to the renewal date if necessary. We've been working with them for quite some time now and they're, they're very fair, respectful. We have no concerns, no problems so far. We recommend approval of this renewal also.
Do we have a motion, item seven?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action and request to host the first annual Rattler Freshman Orientation Football Camp on July 31st, 2017 through August 3rd, 2017.
The football season is close and coming and it's almost here. We're gonna see the CISD, Rattler Football Program, will be hosting its first annual freshman orientation football camp where they will have no physical contact and it'll be held on Monday, the 31st of July through August the 3rd. The purpose of the camp is to get campers acclimated or conditioned to the daily routines and procedures associated with the high school practices and training procedures. There will be no charge for the campers. The camp will provide our insurance to make sure that there's everything covered and we're fully compliant. We recommend approval of this camp.
Do we have a motion, item eight?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis and a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the month of June 2017.
Presented is a request for the approval of the tax refunds for June. Refunds totaling of $807.42 being requested. Attached is the summary of the refunds. We recommend approval of tax refunds for the amount of $807.42.
Do we have a motion, item nine?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item ten, consider and take possible action on requisitions, $5,000 over in a 12-month aggregate.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Garcia, we do have requisitions for your consideration starting on page 123. All these requisitions do have proper funding and, and we're bringing them for, for your review and approval if, if possible. I don't know if anyone has any questions. I just wanna make one notation on page 124, the requisition 278-977. That's for the removal and replacement of the roof at the old library building.
Do we have a motion on item 10?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion, item 10. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item, thank you, Ms. Solis. Item 11, consider and take possible action on early college high school senior class uniforms.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Mr. Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, Board members, and community members. The Early College High School is requesting for our 12th graders, the first graduating class of 2017-18 from the Early College High School, to wear black and/or white polo shirts their senior year with the option of using an embroidered crest, and that is an option with blue and/or black jeans. Presently, right now, the ninth graders wear the navy blue polo shirts, the 10th graders wear the maroon shirts, and the 11th graders wear the gray shirts. We are looking into the district policy for next year on school uniforms because we do know that our high schools do wear the red and the white, but this year, we're going with the, with the recommendation from the Early College. The students, you know, have, have always worn a different color of uniform, so we will look into that for next year for the other high schools and the whole district uniform policy. We do recommend approval.
And did you already pick out one of the logos or when the kids go to try on the shirts, will they have them there?
The, the logos, in talking to Mrs. Guarena, the logos, they're not actually the patches that we're gonna go out and, and buy. The kiddos will buy their, their school uniform and then they have the option of embroidering the crest on the, the, the black and/or white polo shirt. And there are different places where they can go and actually get the crest, which is, there's a couple of, there's one in Roma, there's one in Oranda, there's one in McAllen, different places, and we also have the option of actually buying the patch. And it costs about $3 for, you know, for either the patch or the embroidering of the shirt, you know, because of the expense. When looking at the, the crest, we looked at the, at the last committee meeting, which we didn't, at the previous one, the month before, we did have the different crests, if you remember, Ms. Solis, and right now, presently, we have the one with the, with the flame, which is the original one where it says "original" on your packet, and then there's a sample one, a sample two, and a sample three. And the recommendation at the last committee meeting was for us to look to see if we could come up with one that would show more of the district logo.
To incorporate the district logo.
Right.
So they can be...
Correct. And so if you look at the, the different samples, the ones that have the district logos are samples two and three, and then sample one is the one with the whole torch, and then the original one is the one with the flame. So on that one, since we met yesterday and we looked at the different samples, but we were leaving the actual, you know, the crest, if you all wanted to make the approval, if you wanted to look at the samples and then make a recommendation as to which ones you feel like you should go with. So, but either one, you know, it's okay with, you know, with us. We were looking at the original one is the one that has just the flame. I don't know if there's any recommendations.
We have suggested that they go with the one that students wanted. The student had chosen the one, said, "Well, let's go with what the student had chosen."
And that's the original.
So that was basically, you know, the original one before, so that was the recommendation that had made them when we met, you know, to discuss the items.
I think that makes sense.
The students had voted on that prior to, you know, their senior year, so, and that's the one that, that most of the, the different logos, you know, have because it's easier to work with because it doesn't have the little letterings and the wording. So the original is one that the students, so if that's okay with the school board, then we would go with that recommendation. We would recommend that for your approval.
Do we have a, any more discussion, item 11?
No.
Do we have a motion on item 11?
I would move to approve this item as presented and also with the agreement that it be the original one is chosen by the students, the, the actual crest.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 12?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12, consider and take possible action on TEAC's resource system for the 2017-2018 school year.
Okay, the TEAC's resource system includes the curriculum components, it's, and sample units that are aligned to the current State Board of Education standards. The TEAC's resource is basically a whole full-blown curriculum, a viable and guaranteed curriculum from K through 12 that we are recommending for the school district to purchase for the, for our, for our teachers. It is a full-blown curriculum. It is not a resource. It is not supplemental. It's something that we really, really need for our district and for our teachers. The cost is $62,236 and pending availability of funds, it would be taken from 199, which are their district funds. We do recommend approval for this particular curriculum.
Dr. Letty, and this, this TEAC's resource system, is it something that you would purchase every year or...
The TEAC's resource system, it would be updated every year. Yes, ma'am. It would be updated every year, but it is a full-blown guaranteed curriculum, but there is a, an every-year subscription to it. Correct.
So is it less than what you're paying now or, or it would be $62,000 every year?
It would, we haven't looked at the cost for next year. I, I would imagine it would probably be something that is the same, but every year we would tweak it, but right now, we spend money on, on supplemental, let's say, resources, and we spend money during the summer to update the, the curriculum resources and guides that we have, and this is a K through 12 that is guaranteed, that has been looked at through the entire state of Texas, through the different regional centers. So we would work with it every year and we feel that it's beneficial for our district since we right now don't have a full-blown guaranteed and viable curriculum. We do have supplemental resources. We have programs. We have resource binders, but we are lacking in the area of the aligned curriculum, both horizontally and vertically, so we feel that this is something that, that we need at this point. There will be a reoccurring cost every year, but we can check into the reoccurring cost after this first year and see what the cost actually is. It is two options. The first option has the guaranteed curriculum, and the second option has the actual lesson plans that have been, been built in. It's a dollar extra per student, but it is an additional dollar fee for that, that option too. So we are recommending the both op, both options, which is the $62,236.
The one that comes with the lesson plan?
Yes, ma'am. The one that comes with the lesson plans that are based on the 5E model, which is what we are adopting as our instructional design for this year, or we have been using for this particular year and will continue to use for next year. Since that was one of the indicators that we didn't have an instructional design that was uniform and consistent, we opted to go with that, and this particular system has the, the lesson plans that are based on that model.
And every subject?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's every subject and even has electives. It's K through 12.
And everyone has access to it, obviously?
Everyone would have access to it. Everyone would have access to it, K through 12, all teachers, and there's also a staff development component that comes with it through Region One, so we would also have accessibility to that staff development.
We do recall, you know, one of the, at the beginning of school year last year, we had mentioned to you that that was one of the concern the TA had, when they came in to monitor that we did not have a curriculum guide. If it were to ask the teachers, you know, they would say, "Well, we have, let's say, Agile Mind and things of that nature." All of those were supplementals. This is an actual curriculum guide. All other purchases that we made are supplementals. They're supplemental. This is a core curriculum. It's K through 12, and I'm working with Mr. Triais in making sure that since it's K through 12, how we're gonna make sure that pre-K, the standards from pre-K are also, you know, intertwined into the curriculum so that we can make sure that there's a continuity of skills from pre-K through 12. Now, teachers can no longer say, "We do not have a set curriculum." This is gonna be our set curriculum with the understanding that all the other programs that we have are supplemental.
Are supplemental. So are you still gonna have, you know, how we used to do...
The curriculum development?
Yes.
Right now, we're in the process. When we looked at the TEAC's resource system, they did give us a damage, they let us use the demos for the summer. They were really sure that we were going to purchase it, so they allowed us to use it. So we have been using it all summer, like the month of June. We just finished with the physics curriculum guide that we went to the board with last semester, last month, and we're also working with English 3, English 4, and they're using it right now, and they have developed some very nice lessons using the TEAC's resource system.
And this would also be for the magnet schools and...
It's for the magnets. So the magnet schools are using, using it as well. What they will do with it, they will, with Dr. Doino's guidance as well, what we will do with that is we will take what's on there and then we will tweak it to meet the needs of the magnet population and the GT population and the AP population as well. So they have that curriculum, the base curriculum, but from there, they tweak it to meet the needs of the GT and the AP student as well.
And the special ed?
The special ed, same thing. We can tweak it. We can do with it as much as we want. It has the accessibility for us to go in there and modify and edit and replace and create. It, it has the capability for us to do all of that on this particular system. And what we would basically be updating in the summer, like we used to write, would be the timelines, and even the timelines are there, but it's a, it's a generic timeline. So we would tweak the timelines to meet our needs based on the data that comes in at the end of the year. If we have to tweak here and there, we would tweak them and just fix them during the summer. It would probably take us no more than like two days, which is some of the work that we're doing right now, tweaking timelines, but we wouldn't have to sit and do the 16-day projects and the whole lesson plans because eventually, when we, when we, we have all this, we would just tweak it and eventually, we have it done. It's set. It's gonna be the beginning process that's gonna take us time, like right now, that we're doing the seven-day projects and so forth. But eventually, we'll have it set and we won't have to be worried about, you know what, we don't have a curriculum in, in English 4, or English 3, or English 1. We have it. It's done. It's finally done. It might be two years. It could take three years, but it'll eventually get done. It's an ongoing process.
And the beauty of it also is that as it's changing, as the state changes standards of whatever, it's automatically changed and it's updated.
It gives us updates.
So we don't have to worry about updating it. It will be updated, so we just make sure that we follow through with the consistency of the implementation process throughout.
Any other questions?
Exciting.
We recommend approval.
Oh, no, no, that's not, that's not...
Pending availability of funds through District 199.
Any more discussion, item 12? Do we have a motion, item 12?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item 13, consider and take possible action on staff development on learner-centered instruction for administration.
Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Garcia, we're asking for the approval of, to contract the services of Dr. Veronica Villar, oh, I'm sorry, Veronica Galván. She's of, she's with Excellence in Teaching. She's agreed to design and, and provide us a three-day trainer of trainers module for our administrators, excuse me, our instructional leaders in the areas, or the area of learner-centered practice. This will help the, the teachers or, or should I say, this workshop will address the district instructional leaders so, to be able to readily identify learner-centered instruction as well as be able to provide, for them to be able to provide guidance to our, to our, our teachers in instruction and also help facilitate and guide them to better prepare themselves for, for the new T-Test as well as be able to receive the professional development required for them in, in, for T-PAS. So we, we ask for this, or we ask for your approval. We recommend approval because we're all around it. It hits all our bases. Again, was it, learner-centered instruction is, is a form of indirect instruction. It's a, it's a form of, of concept development, and this is something that is being required and stressed by T-Tests, and we wanna be able to better serve our, our teachers and their students by better serving our administration.
And it's K through 12 or...
It's, it's all, all instructional.
We'll use it.
All instructional leaders.
So the T, the training for the TOT is going to be for administrators?
It's for administrators. It's, it'll consist with a, of two days and then a third-day follow-up.
So these administrators will then go and train someone else or...
They're training their teachers and they'll train, train their instructional staff on what, on, on learner-centered, in other words, understanding what learner-centered techno, uh, instruction is really all about and be able to identify it readily and not just be able to say, "Well, they're group, they're working in groups, so it's automatic." Well, no, not necessarily. It'll give them the, the tools necessary to be able to distinguish as well as be able to guide their teachers to say, "This is what we want. This is what it needs to be." So it's a, it's a very thorough workshop. And Dr. Galván is very good. She, she's, she's actually considered an expert. She, she is running one of the, the top teacher, teacher certification programs in the state. She serves on the, on the board, the state board, and she's very thorough in, in pedagogy.
It's not only gonna be the principals. I wanna make sure that we train assistant principals, possibly bring in the deans to make sure that all of us are very well-familiar with the learner-centered instruction so that we can give that positive feedback to the teachers when we go in and do walkthroughs and that we ourselves, you know, are very well-versed with that type of instruction.
With the, how about the reading coaches? Would they have anything to do with that? Or they would...
It's...
Right now...
Right now...
I know they're not administrators. They don't have appraisals or anything.
Well, see, okay, well, this, this is actually designed for the instructional leader.
Right.
Then to, because it's a TOT, he'll be able, or he or she will be able to go back to their staff and address and, and train those people, like the, the reading coaches, to be able to better facilitate.
That would be pretty, it would be important for the reading coaches because they're, they can go into the classroom and talk to the teachers and look, this is what they're looking for, and maybe bring some, something to the table where the, the teachers can actually get something more, like, right there. You're, you're there. You have that reading coach in the, in the school and they're able to go for help. I, I was just wanting to make it clear in my head.
We'll definitely address and make sure that they're, they are trained as well.
Any more discussion, item 13? Do we have a motion, item 13?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, sir.
Item 14, consider and take possible action on IStation reading program for the 2017-2018 school year.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board. Mr. Garcia, the curriculum and instruction department is seeking approval for IStation reading. IStation reading is a computerized program that instructs and also assesses the students in the five components of reading, which is phonological awareness, phonics, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. Funding is available through SCE and Title I.
How, do they have that period during computer time that they go and they...
So, so how it, how it works is that the first week of every month, the students are assessed, okay? So then, they have three weeks, you know, that month, to practice those skills that they were deficient or struggling with, okay? So every month, it's what they call progress monitoring. So the beauty of this is that, you know, not only do they assess with this program, but, you know, it instructs them on those skills they were, they were struggling with. If you remember, Ms. Lopez, we used to use TPRI.
Yes.
So TPRI, what would happen is that it would be on a one-to-one, you know, teacher and student, and, and then we, we would use a platform, Tango, to analyze the data, okay? Well, we wouldn't practice those skills per se. We would in the classroom, however, this is, this program is adaptive to the child. So whatever, you know, the system saw that this child was not getting or struggling with, that's where, that's the level that they start with. And it's not only an intervention, you know, it's also for enrichment.
I know we had something, when we would take, send the kids to computer, it was called something...
Student Success Maker, I think it was. Yes.
They have one. Is that a kinda...
Well, it, well, the only thing on Success Maker that we wouldn't look at the data, how we were supposed to. So with, with, with IStation, we do look at the data. That's why we have the reading coach interventionist. Of course, with the administrator, administrators at the campus, we looked at the data and we identified those students that are struggling. So then, they go to Tier 2, so they get 30, right. The way we're reading first, sort of. So then they, Tier 2, they, we use the program Voyager to, to do intervention with those students.
I know during our curriculum meeting, one of the issues that had been brought up is, is there enough time to use all of these? Because we're investing money in this, we're investing money in Imagine Learning, and one of the things the teachers were saying is, we're competing on which one we use.
Right, so...
We, we have already clarified that, you know. I know that we had a question, or I had a question with IStation and Imagine Learning.
Right.
In reference to the time element and the, making sure that the students were getting the amount of time needed.
Right, right.
Now with the IStation, we, we have to have it because we use it as a, for the data that we have to send to the state.
Right.
In reference to the Imagine Learning, and I know that, we'll discuss that in a little bit more detail, that can be done in the classroom also because we do have the iPads and things of that nature there.
Right.
So we are able to utilize it there.
Because I know that was one of the concerns.
Yes, you're right.
Time management. We're gonna be investing in all these programs to make sure that they're available. Has it been clarified?
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
Any more discussion item 14? Do we have a motion item 14?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
Do we have a second item 14?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, and we have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just wanted to point out that this month, we didn't have committee meetings. For those that are not aware of committee meetings, that's why the, we have, the board's having questions on these items. Yes, we're, this is the first that we've had an opportunity to question our administration on some of these items. Item 15, considering take possible action on renewal of Image Learning Language Literacy Software for the 2017-2018 school year.
Good evening, Mr. Daniel Garcia, Board President, Mr. Alfredo Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, members of the board, and audience present. Imagine Learning is an award-winning bilingual ESL subweb program that targets second language acquisition and literacy. It features interactive activities, videos, and games. It is research-based, instructionally differentiated, and an incredibly fun program to utilize to ensure students are successful. It targets Telpass four domains, which are the listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And this year, the state is moving Telpass testing online for listening and speaking. One of the features of the Imagine Learning is that it has a recording component. And with that, the kids, when they go to their computer lab, or when they're in the classroom utilizing the centers, and they're in computers, little computer centers using the iPads, they can use the headphones with the microphone, and they can record themselves, and then they can listen to what they are recording. And so, that's one way to practice for the Telpass online. I was telling Mr. Garcia that it is very, very important for the students, for the principals, to understand that this year, the kids need to practice that online. Because if we want to be successful with Telpass, then we need to expose the kids to that environment. Otherwise, you know, they're used to the teachers rating them, and this year is completely different. So, Imagine Learning helps in that component. Each student is also assessed, and lessons for reading and writing are given at the student's own level. And that's one of the beauty of this program. And it is very funny in the sense that the games are, get the kids really engaged, but it's not just that they're having just fun with the games, they're learning as they're using these games. This software allows students to enrich their vocabulary, which is one of the beauty that I like about this program, is that it provides on a weekly basis those vocabulary reports. And so, we see how they're targeting their native language, especially if they're beginners, intermediate, and then how they're getting their second language acquisition and moving on. And that's what we, you know, what the state of Texas recommends for students in the bilingual ESL program. So, this evening, of course, pending availability of funds, we recommend approval, and funding will be through State Bilingual 199, Title III, 263, and SCE. And like I said, we do have a plan for Mr. Triárez, you know, his students in the IStation, which is required by the state, he does need to report data. So, those groups that he needs to report will be going to the computer lab. And then, for those grade levels, which is the kinder, first, and second, those are going to be working in the classroom. We do have at each elementary an iPad card with about twenty-five iPads. Last year, we were able to purchase some iPads with bilingual funds. This year, when we get the new funds, principals will be able to purchase a little bit more. And all the special ed students, which benefit as well from this program, they all have an iPad as well in each elementary. So, we feel very confident that the students will be able to benefit from both programs, you know? And the recommendation for Imagine Learning is about twenty minutes a day for each student.
And this is what grade levels?
This is, Imagine Learning goes from pre-K all the way to sixth grade. But, like I said, like students, for example, in the special ed, if they're at a level, let's say they're in eighth grade, but they're at a third grade level reading, they can benefit from the program as well. But it is pre-K all the way to sixth grade. They do have a Spanish component, which is from pre-K to second grade, in addition to the English component that they have.
Can you say that they'll use it in the classroom with the iPad, or in a center?
Yes, through the bilingual centers, which this year, you know, since last year, we implemented the dual language. So, part of the dual language and bilingual is for the students to go through different centers. And so, some of those centers will also include the computers and the iPads. And some of the classrooms, in some of the, in most of the pre-K, K, first, and second, they do have also computers in the classroom for about five or six computers each teacher. So, that's also one way we're going to target that.
So, they can do it alone?
Mm-hmm, yes. Yes, the teachers just guide them, you know, as far as logging them in, at the beginning of the year, they get assessed, and then based on the level they're at, each student is at a different level. It's differentiated instruction, they're not at the same level, it depends on the level of the student.
And are the teachers familiar with it, are they able to implement it correctly? I know that had been another issue about whether or not they were trained correctly on it.
Yes, yes, they were, Ms. Solis. We, as part of the purchasing of this program, we have a lot of trainings available. This year, the program is moving into the iCloud.
A hundred and sixty thousand, I hope.
Yes. Yes, so, they're moving into the iCloud, and, you know, nowadays, the technology, the iCloud facilitates the accessibility of the program. Another feature that it has, and that we have been using, is that it allows the home use. In other words, the kids can log in from the house, and they can use the program from the house. And we can also log in parents, we can create accounts for them. And that's one of the components that this year, we plan to work with the parental department, you know, to be able, for the parents as well, to be able to benefit from these programs. So, this evening, we respectfully recommend approval.
Or is it next year as well, we're going to have to pay three sixty as well?
It's on a yearly basis, and this is the cost of the program.
So, when do we start this?
This year, this past year.
So, this?
This is the second year, that's why.
And how successful was it?
It was very successful, we had improvements in the reading scores. We also had improvement in, like I said, in the development of the vocabulary, I do have those reports. We do share them with the principals on a weekly basis, as soon as I get those reports. The principals also get those reports. The company is really good about, you know, contacting them, the representatives, if there's any technological issues as well, you know? The teachers can call them directly, besides our technology department, but they can also communicate with them directly. And it was a very successful program. One of the beauty of it is that at the beginning, when the students record themselves, teachers can, during open house, let's say the first open house, they can play that for the parents to see how the kids are speaking, or progressing in their vocabulary, and then at the middle of the year, and then at the end of the year, and they can hear that, the parents themselves, through the recording of the program.
If, for whatever reason, the program you feel, or the administration feels is not working, are we committed to pay the three sixty for next year, or?
It's on a yearly basis or so, if we're, you know, if approved tonight is for this year, we cannot renew the following year, and it's on a yearly basis. And we do have a representative from the company here tonight, if you have any questions there.
Can we have a bigger discount?
Yeah.
Where's this person? Times are tough in Texas. Another coupon or something.
Any more discussion on item? Fifteen?
No, I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion item fifteen, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item sixteen, considering take possible action on revised BESL education program instructional plan.
Yes, the bilingual ESL department, along with recommendations from the bilingual ESL Task Force Committee, revised the bilingual ESL instructional plan and design. The new plan, which is this one that you see here, and you all should have received a copy, complies with the TA's requirements for Chapter eighty-nine, which is adaptations for special populations, and Chapter twenty-nine, which is educational programs, as well as the, our district, special program district policy. The new plan addresses the bilingual ESL vision, mission, and core values, the program content and design, the LPAC procedures, assessment, placement, and curriculum, which is the IPT that we give the kids to test them for the, to see if they qualify for the bilingual program, the instructional framework, the benefits of the bilingual ESL program, our dual-language program, and all the different components that come with the program, the transitional late exit, and the secondary ESL content-based program that we also have in place. We've been training our campuses with PSYOP, the PSYOP components, they're also now in this plan. And of course, the most important thing is the time and treatment, which is now available. The time and treatment component was developed according to the students' proficiency levels, whether they're beginners, intermediate, and/or advanced. In the lower grade levels, beginner students receive more instruction in their native language as they are progressing towards the second language acquisition. And of course, if they're already at the advanced level, it's less instruction in their native language and more, you know, towards the English component, or the English language acquisition. This evening, we recommend approval of this revised bilingual plan, and this was also one of the requirements that TA, you know, asked us to do. And we are clear, yes.
That was one thing, we, we're not scrutinized by TA anymore in reference to bilingual, so we're cleared with that.
Great, excellent, thank you.
Do we have a motion item sixteen?
Had we talked about a logo, no. Had we talked about a logo for this, or am I confusing?
Yes, and the logo is, we have the logo here, and we also have the, we have two logos in the bilingual department.
I remember, maybe we could just stick it right, okay. How, who helped you all revise this?
We form a committee, and we ask every campus principal to send a representative, and we had, from teachers to counselors, assistant principals, you know, different, different, one person, one person per campus. So, it was a big committee, and everybody contributed to the revise of this plan.
Thought maybe you had brought someone from TA to sit with you or something.
This is ours, developed by our own teachers, you know, our administrators, counselors, and it's so beautiful. It's a very well-composed, you know, instructional plan that principals will get, you know, if approved. Every principal will get a copy, so they can be familiar with it and explain it to their staff at the beginning of the school year.
But TA is familiar with the components that we have in there, because we had to report in reference to the development of time and treatment, and the amount of time that we're providing for beginners, intermediate, and advanced, so TA is, you know, well-versed with our plan.
And if they were to request, like now, this complete plan, it would be available for them.
Do we have a motion item sixteen?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Item seventeen, considering take possible action on speech pathologist supervision services stipends for the 2017-2018 school year.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Board Member, Superintendent Mr. Garcia, and all who are present tonight. Currently, we do have four school pathologists who supervise five assistants, and we are asking for the approval of the stipend indicated before you.
Have they ever had a stipend?
Yes, ma'am.
Is something that you?
This is, yes, ma'am. From my knowledge, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the stipend law has been there, but every, we have to bring it up for board approval every year.
So, okay, and how many assistants do they have?
We have five assistants, and there's four pathologists, there's one assistant for every pathologist, for the exception of one. We have one of the school pathologists that does supervise two assistants.
Why is it that it's from 199, and not from the, I guess, special ed? I don't know, did I ask something?
I'm looking back. Because of SHARs we're able to provide?
Yeah, SHARs provide some of the monies for the funding.
Do we have any more discussion item seventeen? Do we have a motion item seventeen?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eighteen, considering take possible action on continuing on inter-local cooperation agreement between Regional Day School Program for the Deaf, McAllen ISD, and River Grande CDC ISD for the 2017-2018 school year.
Again, this would just be a continuation, these are services that our students do need, it is regs mandated, and we're asking for your approval at this time.
There's also a routine item that the students that go to McAllen, the school of the deaf.
We have some that actually go to McAllen, and actually, we have some that are here, and they come and service them, depending on how many days, you know, during the week. We have those that come over as well.
Do we have a motion item eighteen?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nineteen, considering take possible action on renewal of Easy Sped LLC for the 2017-2018 school year.
Basically, what this program does, as you see, it's an easy sped tracker, basically, it tracks the minutes between the teachers and the students, just ensuring that we are giving them the ample time, as stated in their IEPs, for CMC, for intervention, and for inclusion as well. We have that currently, we also, if you look at the further notes, we are also trying to include related services such as speech, occupational, physical, et cetera, just to ensure that we are giving them those proper minutes that are in their IEPs. And this is a system that tracks that for us.
Any discussion item nineteen? Do we have a motion item nineteen?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty, considering take possible action on renewal of I-Ready Diagnostic and Instruction License for the 2017-2018 school year.
Mr. Board President, at this time, I am asking that we table this. I know there was a discussion earlier before I came up here. We do have the IStation, we have the Imagine Learning, and we also have the I-Ready that serves supplementals. So, when we met and we discussed all these three, I decided that I would want to table this tonight, so we could definitely take the time to look into it, to see if this is something that we actually want to continue with.
Right, because of time constraints, I mean, a child can reduce so many, we can't throw everything at them.
Yes, we're looking, you know, at I-Ready, we're seeing that there's some common analogies with the IStation and the other programs that we have, so we want to make sure that if we're duplicating efforts that are not necessary, then we should not be adopting that particular program. So, we've requested that it be tabled.
Correct, and when we looked at it, they had, it was very common to the IStation, so there's really no need to have both, so we'll be taking a further look at that.
We have a recommendation to table, do we have a motion to table?
I would move to table this item.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-one, considering take possible action on renewal of agreement between Small Business Computer Services and River Grande CDC ISD for the 2017-2018 school year.
This is basically another database, we have that as a backup, just in case anything were to happen, that our data still stay there. It also, we also have this on five campuses currently, and these are the high schools and the middle schools. We have customized interactive web calendars, where the teachers and administrators are able to go in there, look at the review, scheduled ARDs, run daily and weekly, monthly reports as well. So, it assists our teachers and our administrators that are in charge of this.
Do we have a discussion, do we have a motion item twenty-one?
I would move to approve item twenty-one as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-two, considering take possible action on renewal of contract agreement between Roberto Di Huerta, consultant, and River Grande CDC ISD for orientation and mobility services for the 2017-2018 school year.
Again, this is something that we have had ongoing, and it is regs mandated, I'm sorry, and we just need to continue with this, so we can ensure that our students are receiving the proper services. And we ask for your approval.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I would move to approve that item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, and item twenty-two, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-three, considering take possible action on one-year extension to the existing contract between Annabelle Asua, LPTA, DBA, ABC Therapy, Inc., and River Grande CDC ISD for the physical therapy services 2017-2018 school year.
Again, they are the ones that have been providing these services to our students, so we're asking for your approval on the continuation.
Any discussion item twenty-three? Do we have a motion item twenty-three?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-four, considering take possible action on one-year extension to the existing contract between Ruth Cardosa, M.A.LSSP, and River Grande CDC ISD for Psychology and Behavioral Services 2017-2018 school year.
We ask for your approval that we extend this contract, she is the only LSSP that we have currently, and she is the one that does our students' evaluations.
Any discussion item twenty-four? Do we have a motion item twenty-four?
I would move to approve this item as presented. I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-five, consider and take possible action on memorandum of agreement between South Texas College Continuing Education Program and Rio Grande CDC ISD for the 2017-2018 school year.
Mr. Board President, at this time, I would like to table this item as well. You'll see that it's not a very expensive program. This is an eighteen-plus program that would be able to give our students employability skills, but since I, I want to be able to meet with a proper team, do more of an in-depth research, just to ensure the success of this program before we launch it.
We have a recommendation to table. Do we have a motion?
I would move to table it.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item, thank you, Ms. Garcia. Item twenty-six, consider and take possible action on memorandum of agreement between McAllen Careers Institute and Rio Grande CDC ISD Career and Technical Education Department for courses offering, offerings for Gruia High School and Rio Grande City High School Welding One, Two, and Welding Three for the 2017-2018 school year.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, all present in the School Board Forum, and the audience present. We want to continue at Rio Grande City High School and at Rio Grande City CDC, Gruia High School, the welding classes, welding one, two, and three for our juniors and seniors, so they can continue to get their welding license and their American Welding Society license. And the funding will be used through Career and Technology.
Do we foresee having this at that early college high school?
If Ms. Correa asks for it, sure. But if it's feasible to her.
Yeah, it would be nice. I, I was excited about that.
But I would imagine if it's available through Rio and Gruia and those other home campuses, they could access it through their home campus if needed?
I don't think so, because I know we have to follow like a sequence of events, you know, sequence of classes. And I know that Ms. Correa was very excited about it last year, and then, you know, I don't know, it's up to her, because, you know, it's an early college high school, where, you know, they're going to graduate with an associate degree, so I think they have to follow certain, you know, guidelines, since, you know, we are, we're very lucky that Rio Grande City High School has the early college high school, because it could have gone to Roma, it could have gone somewhere else. So, you know, definitely if she wants to follow those career pathways. But remember that it's not through STC at this point right here, it's McAllen Careers Institute. See, so probably that's why, because they're, they're not getting any, you know, credits towards their college associate degree. It's an independent school, and that's allowable through Career and Technology. We have gone through STC before, but when we did the, the tests, that the students have to actually test, you know, have to do mig welding and stuff like that.
They won't pass.
They all failed, right? And we need to report those licenses, and we've had a very good success rate with McAllen Careers Institute. That's why.
Any more discussion, item twenty-six? Do we have a motion, item twenty-six?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-seven, consider and take possible action on memorandum of agreement between South Texas College and Rio Grande CDC ISD Career and Technical Education Department for courses offerings for Rio Grande, for Rio High School Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning, and Refrigeration Technology for the 2017-2018 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. As you well know, we have a vacancy, which was career preparation, but that person retired. So the principal has asked me that we use those funds, and instead of continuing with that career pathway with that class, to be innovative and to do a dual enrollment class, which is HBIC. As you know, it's a very hot area here in the valley, and there's a big need for technicians. It will be a two-year certification. We will also be the first dual enrollment high school in the valley to do this. STC has been very in agreeance, you know, to do it. We don't have the actual contract yet, because they're on vacation. We've been negotiating with Dr. Villarreal and Mr. Nick Gonzalez, and the students will be getting, you know, credit hours towards their associates if they can continue. So we'll be the first. I know that Dr. King tried it out this summer as well, so we're really excited about it. So we want to use the funding that was being used for career preparation teacher to be a new initiative for Rio Grande City High School.
Just a high, just re.
Pardon?
Just Rio Grande?
Yes, because what I tried to explain, the teacher retired, so that funding source will be used to pay the contracted services instructor from STC, and our teachers, and I'm sorry, and our students will be bused to STC from Rio High to the facility.
It's a great opportunity.
Any more discussion, item twenty-seven? Do we have a motion, item twenty-seven?
I move to approve this item as presented.
Do we have a motion by Ms. Solis? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-eight, consider and take possible action on memorandum of agreement between South Texas College and Rio Grande CDC ISD Career and Technical Education Department for courses offerings for Rio High School, CT 1581 and 582 Digital Interactive Multimedia, CT 1331 and 1332 Business Information Management Web Technologies, 1481 and 1482 for the 2017-2018 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. Also, for Rio Grande City High School, one of our career and technology teachers also retired. So with the principal's request, we would like to continue to have dual enrollment classes. So we are requesting an instructor from STC to come and teach these classes in the classroom of that teacher that has retired. That's where the funding source will be, through Career and Technology, and also known as, you may know them, BIM and DIM, but it, there will be dual enrollment for Rio Grande City High School.
Discussion, item twenty-eight? Do we have a motion, item twenty-eight?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything on reports?
No.
It is now seven thirty-one. We'll be heading under.
Mr. Simon will have some report.
I'll do a real quick PowerPoint on the television studio.
Oh.
I'm trying to make it real quick, just, you say you want to speed up things?
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, members of the board, Mr. Garcia, members of the audience. I'm just going to do a real quick report on the media studio that some of you may or may not know we are creating. This studio will be used by the media classes at Gruia High and Rio High. Basically, we started this project this Ja, this June, and the reason we want to do it is because Roma has GTN, and we wanted something to start be, to be able to compete with them. And we started the creation. What we did is, we actually took the old, what you see in front of you, that's the old media tech building that used to be at Rio High School about twenty years ago. So it was, it was created specifically for a TV studio. We actually spent, back then, this was about twenty, eighteen, twenty years ago, we actually spent about seventy-five thousand dollars on that building, including equipment. Well, twenty years have passed, and that equipment is no longer useful for us. So what we've done is, there was a grant that was given to the district, a hundred thousand dollars, and we were given.
It was, I think it was a donation.
A donation, I'm sorry, for a hundred thousand dollars. And we were given the task to get a building ready, get the equipment, get computers, get everything ready for a media studio. So what we've done is, we've turned this building into that. It's been completely re-roofed, it's been recited, and as we speak, maintenance, and I want to thank Mr. TJ Gonzalez and Rob Guerra, they've been working throughout the summer to get this building ready. They're working on the inside right now. They're working on painting the inside of that building, where we're going to have a green screen. This building will be divided into two areas, the first being the computer labs, where the students will go in there and edit video, import and edit the video, and the TV studio. That's where they'll be able to, kind of like what you have right now, but it'll be virtual. They'll be sitting in front of you via the green screen, and we'll put desks in front of them, and they'll do newscast, reports, information, maybe even weather. And that's the goal for that portion of it. We have another building that we took over, just for your information, this is located right next to our old band hall. It's the building right across the old band hall. We've taken possession of that building also. And what we're going to do with this building, and they've already started remodeling it also, the first part will be used for offices. The second room will be our sound room, where students will go in there and edit any video that they have. And of course, every room has, every building has to have bathrooms. There were no bathrooms in the area, so actually, maintenance went in there and created our bathrooms for us. This is what the offices look like. We'll have office number one and office number two. This will be for the person that will be in charge of the, of the studio. We're hoping that maybe we'll, we'll hire a production specialist and an assistant to run this. And then we have sound room number one, sound room number two, and sound room number three. This is in the center of the building. This is where the kids will go in there, and we have two or three groups. Each sound room will have a computer with a microphone and headphones. And right now, the goal is to have twelve to sixteen IMAX that will be dual boot. They'll run Windows and Macintosh. They'll, they'll go both, both platforms. So that's the goal. We're looking at about twelve to sixteen IMAX that we want to purchase. We're looking at about six video cameras. We're going to have a teleprompt, the whole shebang. We're going to have lights. We're going all out on this. With the a hundred thousand dollar budget that we had, and of course, our banthers. We'll have ladies and men's. The, the goal is to stay within budget. We had estimated about thirty thousand for getting the building ready. We have spent nineteen thousand so far. We still have eleven thousand in the budget. In meeting with Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Guerra, they said that what we need to finish to accomplish our goal is within the budget. So we will have the seventy thousand. With those seventy thousand left, we will purchase the computers, the software, and all the video equipment that we need. We need a, a tricaster, we need the, the controller for it, and we're going to have a huge storage. We, we're going to be buying two twenty-four terabyte storages, devices, so that we can save our video. So they have given me a timeline that by the start of the school year, the building will be finished. I've talked to the business office, and they're telling me that by September first, we should be able to order the equipment. So by October first, this building should be ready, and by then, we'll have another presentation to show you the finished product.
And I know the, the donor did want something published on the paper, so he could see what we did with the money, so I know we can keep.
So maybe once the equipment comes in.
Yes, once the equipment comes in, and everything is ready to go with the green screen and everything, and maybe even, we'll, we'll even put something on the scoreboard to thank him on behalf of that, do a little, a little televised skit by the kids.
That would be great.
So we'll make sure that they, they get recognized for that. So that's just a real quick situation on where we're at. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on reports?
Any questions? No questions? We're good.
Anything else on reports? It is, it is seven thirty-seven, and we'll be heading to closed session under authority of the Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Eight thirty-eight, we're out of executive session. Item A requires no action. Do we have a motion, item B?
Yes. Item B.
Is sixteen resignation?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a motion, item C?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a motion, item D?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, and item D. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E. Do we have a motion, item E?
I move to approve this item as presented by council and executive.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do we have a motion, an item F, which is A, subsection A, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Jorge Choa Adol versus Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District Civil Action Number Seven, colon sixteen, dash CV, dash zero zero five seven, United States District Court, Southern District of Texas, McAllen Division. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve this item as presented in executive as to Jorge Choa and Juventud Garcia.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. It is eight forty PM. Meeting is now adjourned.